Yeah, we're ready to go. Everything else, yeah.
Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome. I'm Dan Garodnik, Chair of the City Planning Commission and Director of the Department of City Planning. Welcome to today's review session of the City Planning Commission. We are joined today by Vice Chair Knuckles, Commissioners Benjamin, Bozorg, Sirulo, Dweck, Gold, Goodridge, Kermani, Marine, Osorio, and Rampershead. Thank you all. It's been an exciting week with a couple of major announcements from Mayor Adams that will have a significant positive impact on the city for years to come. I joined the mayor at 95 Madison Avenue, a building that is going to be converted from offices to much-needed housing. Unfortunately, many other underutilized commercial buildings throughout New York City are unable to undergo a similar process due to outdated zoning rules, and that's why the mayor announced that City of Yes for Housing Opportunity will include changes to greatly expand the number of buildings that will have the ability to convert. City of Yes would make buildings built before 1990 eligible to convert to housing and update from the existing 1961 and 1977 cutoffs, and allow offices and other non-residential buildings to convert to housing anywhere in the city where housing is permitted under zoning. The mayor also announced that this fall we will start public engagement for the Midtown-South Mixed-Use Neighborhood Plan, which will explore allowing housing in areas zoned for manufacturing and create an even more vibrant community in Manhattan between roughly 24th and 41st Streets, 5th to 8th avenues. This is a great opportunity to bring homes, including permanently income-restricted homes, to the heart of Manhattan with fantastic access to economic opportunities and mass transit. And that's not all. Earlier this week, sorry, earlier last week, the mayor also stopped by Havana Cafe in the Bronx to sign legislation establishing a permanent outdoor dining program. Dining Out NYC will be the largest program of its kind in the nation, making outdoor dining more accessible, safe, and welcoming. Outdoor dining gave a much-needed lifeline to thousands of restaurants and workers during the worst of the pandemic. That's why the Department of City Planning's text amendment to expand outdoor dining to the entire city was one of our top priorities. We're glad to see this transformational step that will create a more equitable outdoor dining experience for all New Yorkers. Finally, looking forward, I'd like to invite New Yorkers to join the Department of City Planning, the Department of Transportation, the State Department of Transportation, and the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene for a series of walking tours in September and October as part of the community-driven study to reimagine the Cross Bronx Expressway. These walking tours will give the public an opportunity to witness and speak to the on-the-ground conditions and the harmful effects that the expressway has on those who live and work nearby. Now, for today's agenda, we're kicking things off with a new project by the Department of Housing Preservation and Development at 376 Rockaway Avenue in Brownsville, Brooklyn. This project, the Brownsville Arts Center and Apartments, includes 290 income-restricted homes, new community facility space, and nearly 20,000 square feet of open space. It's located near multiple bus lines and is about a half mile from the L-Train and the Long Island Railroad. We'll also take a look at another project by HPD, known as Timbale Terrace. This proposal aims to turn NYPD parking lot in East Harlem into a 100% income-restricted residential development with around 340 homes, nearly 100 of them reserved for formerly homeless New Yorkers. The building would be located near Marcus Garvey Park and the 23 subway stop at 116th Street, and also serve as the new home of the Afro-Latin Jazz Alliance. Moving back to Brooklyn, we'll hear details on 230 Kent Avenue, a mixed-use proposal in Williamsburg with 40 homes, a dozen of them income-restricted, and ground-floor retail. The project would be close to Domino Park, Bedford Avenue L- Train stop, and a New York City ferry stop. We will also vote on a modification to allow the redesign of the interior public plaza of 60 Wall Street. Located a couple of blocks from this hearing room, the space includes an entrance to the Wall Street subway station for the 2 and the 3 trains. On Wednesday, the commission will vote on 244 East 106th Street, a proposal by the Department of Housing Preservation and Development to create 32 income-restricted units built as part of Share NYC. This pilot uses a shared housing model where two or more independently occupied rooms share a kitchen and/or a bathroom. But as part of that, there is an associated application to confirm that this site does not need a transit easement. So we are going to look at and authorize that ahead of Wednesday's vote for the full project. Finally, we will have a follow-up discussion on City of Yes for Carbon Neutrality, the Department of City Planning's citywide initiative to modernize zoning and make it easier to install green technologies to heat and cool our homes, power electric vehicles, help people compost, and more. We will go over what we heard at last month's public hearing and hear from agency staff about some small changes that we intend to make to the proposal. So with that, thank you all very much for your presence here in the dog days of August. And with that, Ryan, I'll turn it over to you.
Certainly. So this is the review session for the New York City Planning Commission for Monday, August 21, 2023. The time is 1:06 PM, and a quorum is present in the hearing room here at 120 Broadway. The first item on our agenda is the certification of a zoning map and zoning text amendment and a UDAP designation and disposition of city-owned property in Brooklyn, Community District 16. Our presenter is Jukey Sai.
Afternoon, Commissioners.
It's right next to the...
Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is an application by the Department of Housing Preservation and Development for a UDAP zoning map amendment and zoning text amendment to create an MIH area in order to facilitate a new nine-story, 258,000-square-foot development with 290 income-restricted housing units and including 26,000 square feet of community facility space and 17,000 square feet of outdoor open space. Brownsville Arts Center and Apartments is part of HPD's 2017 Brownsville Plan, which was a community-based planning process to develop a shared vision and plan for the future of Brownsville. In coordination with the release of the Brownsville Plan, HPD issued the Brownsville RFP to redevelop several sizable vacant city-owned sites within Brownsville, each focusing on a specific theme to address community goals. Brownsville Arts Center and Apartments is intended to be a hub for arts and culture as well as creative retail. Glenmore Manor, which is also part of the Brownsville Plan RFP, is a short walk east along Glenmore Avenue, and you can see that with the orange arrow there, from Brownsville Arts Center and Apartments. It is an 11-story mixed-use development currently under construction, which will have 230 income-restricted housing units and 20,000 square feet of community facility space set aside for entrepreneurship programming. The third Brownsville Plan RFP project, which is out of the frame here, is Livonia 4, which consists of four new residential buildings with 500 income-restricted housing units along Livonia Avenue. Both projects, Livonia 4 and Glenmore Manor, received CPC and City Council approval. The project area is comprised of the development site and non-applicant-owned sites on Block 3499 in the Brownsville neighborhood of Brooklyn. It is bound by Rockaway Avenue to the east, Pittkin Avenue to the south, Chester Street to the west, and East New York Avenue to the north. Directly south of the project area, a major retail corridor for the area runs east to west along Pittkin Avenue and north and south, mostly south, on Rockaway Avenue. There are multiple schools, houses of worship, and daycare centers within the surrounding area, and a branch of the Brooklyn Public Library labeled here. Open space includes Howard Playground, which is right next to the Brooklyn Public Library branch. Crossroads Juvenile Center is located west of the project area along Chester Street, and NYPD's 73rd Precinct is located to the northeast of the project area. The project area is well-served by public transportation. The Rockaway Avenue 34 subway station lies approximately half an area, excuse me, half a mile south of the project area, and it's out of frame here, but I pointed the direction with that blue arrow at the bottom of the screen. The East New York LIRR and Atlantic Avenue L Station lie approximately half a mile northeast of the project area. Again, they're out of frame, but a blue arrow in the upper right-hand corner points in their direction. The project area is served by the B14, B12, and B60 buses. There are a number of new residential projects in the area currently being developed, and those are labeled here in pink. In addition to Glenmore Manor, which I just spoke about, directly north of the project area is 326 Rockaway Avenue, which is a new residential development with a new 14-story, excuse me, mixed-use development currently under construction, which will have 215 income-restricted housing units. To the southwest of the project area, a private applicant is currently seeking a rezoning to develop two new seven-story residential buildings with roughly 200 dwelling units. The commission held its public review for this project earlier this month, the Belmont Osborne rezoning. The land uses within the surrounding area include residential buildings, mixed residential and commercial buildings, commercial and office buildings, public facilities and institutional uses, parking facilities, industrial manufacturing uses, and vacant land. Residential uses in the surrounding area include three-story multifamily walk-up buildings as well as multifamily residential buildings, including NYCHA's Howard Houses directly to the east of the development site, and the development site is labeled here in green with a green outline. Mixed-use residential and commercial buildings are located along Pittkin Avenue to the south of the project area and along Rockaway Avenue east of the project area. Industrial and manufacturing uses in the surrounding area include an automobile repair shop on East New York Avenue just north of the project area. The northern portion of the project area is located within an R6 zoning district with a C23 commercial zoning overlay, and the southern portion of the project area is located within a C43 zoning district. The area to the north of the project area is Zoned C82, and to the south of the project area, that C43 district that I've mentioned extends east and west along Pittkin Avenue and south on Rockaway Avenue. The area to the east and west of the project area is Zoned R6 and R6 C23. This slide zooms in on Block 3499 and shows the project area outlined in yellow and the development site outlined in green. The development site is not entirely coterminous with the project area. It extends just slightly to the south, and that's approximately for a total of 60 square feet, so very little. Moving into some photos of the project area, this photo looks west from Rockaway Avenue at the project area, and you can see the locator map in the upper right-hand corner, and the yellow hash indicates the project area. This photo looks southwest on Rockaway Avenue at the project area. This photo, turning around, looks northwest at the project area and includes some of the commercial development that is just to the south of the project area. This photo looks northwest at Block 3499. You can't actually see the project area, but this is the corner of Rockaway Avenue and Pittkin Avenue, and this shows some of that commercial strip along Pittkin Avenue. This photo looks northeast at Block 3499. Again, you can't see the project area here, but this is the corner of Chester Street and Pittkin Avenue, sort of turned-around view of that commercial strip on Pittkin Avenue. Moving up Chester Street, this looks north on Chester Street, and you can see Crossroads, or rather, the wall at the outside of Crossroads Juvenile Center on the left-hand side. Moving up Chester Street, this photo looks east from Tester Street at the project area. This photo looks southeast from East New York Avenue at the lot directly north of the project area, where currently 326 Rockaway Avenue, the new residential, or excuse me, mixed-use development, is taking place. The proposed actions would facilitate a new nine-story, 258,000-square-foot development with 290 income-restricted housing units and including 26,000 square feet of community facility space and 17,000 square feet of outdoor open space. Here, you can see an illustrative floor plan, and the orientation has switched a little bit, so please note that. At the top of the slide, you can see Rockaway Avenue, where it intersects with Glenmore Avenue, and that's to the east of the development. On the left-hand side, the pink hashed line indicates the southern edge of the 326 Rockaway Avenue development, which sits to the north of the project area. The proposed development will include a mix of studios, one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and three-bedroom units. It will contain approximately 25,500 square feet of community facility space on the ground floor and cellar. This will accommodate uses such as a contemporary art and media center, a performance arts school, a music school, and a collaborative performance space. The intent, as envisioned by the Brownsville Plan, is for this development to serve as a cultural hub for the Brownsville neighborhood. The proposed development will include several outdoor spaces. Open Space 1 is approximately 5,200 square feet and open to the public. It's located toward the northeast corner of the development site, adjacent to the proposed arts and cultural facility on the ground floor, and to the southern-facing edge of 326 Rockaway Avenue. Open Space 2 is approximately 4,000 square feet and is located at the northwest corner of the development site. Open Space 3 is a 5,400-square-foot garden located to the southwest of the development site, or the building, rather. Open Space 4 is 2,600 square feet and located in the inner courtyard of the development. Proposed development is anticipated to include several sustainability measures, such as rooftop solar and an onsite stormwater detention tank, amongst others. The applicant is proposing three actions. First, HPD proposes an urban development action area project designation and disposition of city-owned property for the development site, which is Block 3499, Lot 15. The second action, which you see here, is a zoning map amendment to rezone part of an existing C43 district to an R6, excuse me, and an R6 C23 district to an R7A and R7A C24 district that together would be coterminous with the project area. R7A districts permit MIH developments at up to 4.6 FAR with a minimum base height of 40 feet and a maximum base height of 75 feet and a maximum building height of 95 feet or nine stories. And you can see the basic envelope on your screen. C24 districts are commercial districts mapped as overlays in residential districts that allow a range of local-serving retail and service uses. Commercial uses have a maximum FAR of 2.0 but are limited to the ground floor in mixed-use buildings. The applicant is proposing a zoning text amendment to map mandatory inclusionary housing options 1 and 2, coterminous with the proposed project area. Option 1 requires that a minimum of 25% of the residential area be designated as affordable to households earning incomes with an average not exceeding 60% area median income. Option 2 requires that a minimum of 30% of the residential floor area be designated as affordable to households earning incomes with an average not exceeding 80% of area median income. In addition to the proposed actions being sought at the CPC, HPD is seeking a mayoral zoning override to waive a few small requirements. A, the 60-foot rear yard equivalent requirement, the requirement that no portion of a residential building be permitted in a rear yard, and the 15-foot setback. And that mayoral zoning override, as I'm sure many of you are familiar, will travel alongside or at the same time as these land use actions. This application requires a racial equity report, which helps put the proposal into context with neighborhood-level socioeconomic data. According to the racial equity report, the median household income in Brownsville Ocean Hill is roughly $34,500, which is about 50% of citywide median household income and roughly 35% of New York City region area median income. The proposed development would include 290 dwelling units with 100% of those units being income-restricted. The applicant states that they would provide a total of 45 dwelling units for formerly homeless individuals, 29 dwelling units for those at 0% to 30% of AMI, 101 dwelling units at those making 50% of AMI, and 115 dwelling units for those at 60% to 80% of area median income. Estimated monthly rent of affordable units for households earning 50% of area median income is $860 for a studio to $1,280 for a two-bedroom. The population living in Brownsville Ocean Hill is 67% black non-Hispanic, 23% Hispanic Latino, 3% white non-Hispanic, and 1% Asian non-Hispanic. From 2010 to 2020, the area saw a 12% increase in population with an increase in the Asian, Hispanic, and white populations, and no increase in the black non-Hispanic population. While population grew by 12%, the number of housing units in Community District 16 grew by just 8%, most of those being HPD projects. In summary, this is an application by the Department of Housing Preservation and Development for a UDAP zoning map amendment and a zoning text amendment to create an MIH area, all in order to facilitate a new nine-story, 258,000-square-foot development with 290 income-restricted housing units, 26,000 square feet of community facility space for cultural activities, and 17,000 square feet of outdoor open space. This is the third major Brownsville Plan RFP project and a milestone in the city-led effort to bring 2,500 new affordable homes and $1 billion of investment in housing to the neighborhood of Brownsville. Thank you. I'll take any questions.
Great. Thank you, Jukey. I'm going to turn to my colleagues in a moment. Let me just start off with one. Maybe you can go back to Slide 16 if you don't mind. Just wanted to look at those open spaces for a second. So there are four open spaces. One of them is internal. Yes. The other three are on the perimeter. Is that correct?
Yes, but I think only Open Space 1 is open to the, like, accessible for the public.
Okay. And so is this space sandwiched between this building and the building next door? Can you just, like, tell me a little bit more about that, how that will look and feel? Because based on the way it's shown on this, it has a feeling like it might dead-end or feel like you might get trapped in there.
Yeah. So, thanks, Chair. A great question. And as you can see, I think it's important to orient. At the top of the slide, you can see the label for Glenmore Avenue, and that itself is where the avenue kind of ends. So this space is sandwiched between the northern edge of the development site and then the southern edge of 326 Rockaway Avenue. And I'll note, the department has some concerns that, given that this is not at the end of Glenmore Avenue, the site, that open plaza might not be super visible, which can bring up some concerns around just sort of eyes on the street and visibility of the space, sometimes safety concerns around open spaces that dead-end like that. But I will note, we're working closely with our colleagues at HPD and can speak more to the plans for this space further on in the application process.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Vice Chairman.
Interestingly, this project doesn't have any planned retail space. So I'm wondering, do the other new projects that you mentioned that are coming online, will any of them have retail space within them? I'm thinking specifically for food markets.
Yes. Commissioner Livonia 4, which was approved last year by the CPC, if you remember, there's a supermarket in the ground floor of Site C1, like, a new supermarket, and I forget if there's any new retail. And I'll actually, I can double-check. I know I mentioned creative retail for this site, and I can just double-check with HPD. I know the current floor plan is illustrative, so I can see if there's any potential retail slotted for this space as well.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman.
Sorry, if I may also, Commissioner Knuckles, I think that's also important to think about the context of this development right near Pittkin, which is a major retail corridor, as you may be familiar with, in the area, and it's really just a half-block down, and there are lots of stores, retail, supermarkets nearby, but it's a major corridor, commercial corridor for Brownsville.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Commissioner Kermani.
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation. I have one question that just may be my newness, just some clarification. Is there a difference between income-restricted and permanently affordable?
So I will defer to HPD on the, sometimes there's terms on the subsidies received by buildings. I should, I can clarify, like, MIH is permanently affordable, but as far as the terms on the degree of, like, the length of the affordability, I assume it's permanently affordable, just given this is a HPD project, but I don't want to, I'll ask them to comment to that on the permanent nature of it. Yep.
That would be really helpful, because I'm sure there are differences, and if this is 290 units of income-restricted, is that permanent, or does it have
Yeah.
Or does it have conditions?
Yeah.
I think that's an important clarification. And then on the incubator space, the, which I think is a really important feature of, of this project, and you may not know the answers to this, but is that space that folks will need to rent? Or is it, and do we know the terms of those? And who are the preferred, will there be preference given to Brownsville residents? And like, how does that work?
That's a, a great question, Commissioner Kramani. I'm going to defer to the applicant on that to speak to the programming in the space. I know there's, you know, a lot of attention being paid to the programming going on here, but yeah, I think the applicant will best be able to speak to that. And I think certainly a lot of attention being paid to the concerns you're raising there.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Gold.
Jukey, thank you, and a terrific presentation.
Thank you.
This is an exciting project that seems to me like it would have really good potential perhaps for Mih too. And so was, for, for option two under Mih, and was just curious if that had been, it says, you know, if the document shows that they're looking at option one. Now, I'm sure they've run economic models, and I'm sure they need to make it palatable, and, you know, my guess is perhaps the community space is what tips it towards, towards needing to be option one, but would be curious if you know, or, you know, or, or if they could put forward, why not think about option two here? I'm, I'm, I'm guessing you won't know, but I think it's a question for.
That's a, yeah, Commissioner Gold, I'll have to ask the applicant to speak to that one, but.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Buzzard.
Hey, it's really awesome to see this project come forward. I know it's been a long time in the making. I think when HPD comes back, it would be helpful to hear a little bit about what they heard through the extensive planning process that this project came out of, and how this project and some of the programming speaks to what was heard. I think it was almost a year-long planning process. And the question I have is actually about the privately-owned lots. Do, do we know much about how those owners have been engaged? I know they're part of the, they're obviously not part of the project, but they're part of the rezoning area, and just what the implications are for those owners and the tenants there, if they've been engaged, and what types of buildings they are, if they're rent-regulated at all, to be helpful now.
Yeah. Commissioner Buzzard, I think for the most part can, I'll leave to HPD to speak to the Brownsville Plan RFP and the potential engagement with those residents of those buildings. I believe they're three-story, like, three-family. I don't think they're rent-stabilized, but I, and I, I can double-check this, but I don't think we, in our environmental review process, saw them as soft sites, just given the ownership is different for those, for those lots, but I can follow up on that from our end.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much, Jukey. This item is certified. We'll look forward to seeing it back to us before.
Thank you.
All right, Ryan.
The second item on our agenda is a certification of a zoning map and zoning text amendment in Brooklyn Community District One, and our presenter is Lucia Marquez Reagan.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Chair Granik and Commissioners. This is an application by Kent Riverview LLC for a zoning map amendment from an M-one-four to an M-one-four R-seven-X, a zoning text amendment to section one-two-three-six-three to add R-seven-X as a residential pairing for an MX, MX mixed-use, MX-eight mixed-use district, and to appendix F to map Mih to facilitate a new eight-story mixed-use residential development with forty units, twelve of which would be income-restricted. The project area is in the north side neighborhood of Williamsburg, Community District One, and is located at two-thirty Kent Avenue, the project area outlined in blue on this map. The project area is well-served by transit. The North Williamsburg Ferry Station is approximately point-four miles to the north. The Bedford Avenue L Station is located approximately point-five miles to the east. And in the next slides, we'll go over previous land use actions and nearby open space. This map, along with the maps following, are all in the north-south orientation. In 2005, a hundred-and-eighty-four blocks of Greenpoint, Williamsburg were rezoned as a part of the Greenpoint, Williamsburg rezoning. Prior to the rezoning, the waterfront and surrounding blocks largely consisted of an M-three-one district. In this rezoning, the area east of the project area was mapped with a special mixed-use district, MX-eight, with a manufacturing district paired with a residential. The area north were mapped R districts, and the project area was not rezoned. Nearby rezonings and developments include the nearly-completed Domino Sugar Development, containing two-thousand-two-hundred-and-eighty-two dwelling units, office space, and more. Domino Sugar was approved in 2014 and is located one block to the south. The River Ring rezoning approved in 2021, which included the project area as well as four other full blocks and a part, and a part of a fifth. The project area, along with the block north, was rezoned in River Ring from an M-three-one zoning district to an M-one-four zoning district. The two blocks, two full blocks and a portion of the third to the west of the project area is the River Ring Development Site and was rezoned from an M-three-one to a C, C-six-two. And once completed, will have one-thousand-fifty new dwelling units. Open space resources include Grand Ferry Park and Domino Park, both waterfront parks that are located one block south of the project area along River Street and Grand Street. And once completed, the Waterfront Public Access Area, WPAA, will be located one block to the west of the project area along the East River as a part of the River Ring Project, connecting Grand Ferry Park and Domino Sugar Park to parcel twenty-seven of the Greenpoint, Williamsburg Waterfront Access Plan. Here we have a map of the project area and coastal flood zones. The project area is not currently within a coastal flood zone. The project area here in blue has frontages along Metropolitan Avenue and eighty-foot-wide street to the north, Kent Avenue, a sixty-foot-wide street to the east, North First Street, an a hundred-foot-wide street to the south, and River Street, a fifty-foot-wide street to the west. The project area consists of Development Site One, which is an approximately five-hundred and, five-thousand-five-hundred-square-foot vacant lot, and Lot Three, the adjacent lot to the north of the development site, which is an approximately thirteen-thousand-four-hundred square-foot vacant lot. Lot Three is owned by Con Edison and has been vacant since a two-story building on the site was demolished in 2018. The B-thirty-two bus runs along Kent Avenue with service between Long Island City and the Williamsburg Bridge Plaza, and the Q-fifty-nine bus runs along Kent Avenue as well with service between Williamsburg Bridge Plaza and Rego Park. The project area is in an M-one-four zoning district, and as previously mentioned, was mapped from an M-three-one to an M-one-four in 2021 as a part of the River Ring application. M-one-four districts have a maximum permitted industrial and commercial FAR of two, community facility FAR of six-point-five, accessory parking is not required. This M-one-four area consists of the project area and the block to the north. The block to the north contains commercial and parking uses. The block to the south is an M-one, M-three-one district. The blocks in the surrounding area, east, north, and west, consist of a mosaic of residential districts with a mixed-use district to the east, R-six district to the north, and again the recently rezoned C-six-two to the west. Back to the previous slide. Current uses in the surrounding area include residential, commercial, and industrial uses. Residential uses seen on this map in light and darker yellow and orange range from two-to-three-story mixed residential and commercial buildings and larger six-to-eight-story elevator apartment buildings to the east of the project area, high-rise towers to the west of the project area along the East River waterfront. Industrial and commercial uses are seen in dark purple and red and consist of a mix of light industrial warehousing and utility uses. Light industrial uses on small lots are interspersed, interspersed throughout the neighborhood. Notable community facilities are shown in blue on the map and include PS-eight-four, Jose de Diego Middle School, two blocks southeast of the project area, and Our Lady Constellation Church, two-and-a-half blocks east of the project area. In the next few slides, we'll look at project area images. We'll start at the southern border of the project area and move counterclockwise around the block. In this view, we are facing northwest on the corner of North Street and Kent Avenue, the development site here in yellow, project area in blue. Turning right, still at the southern border, we are now on the corner of North First Street and Kent Avenue, looking down Kent Avenue. On the left is the project area, and we can see the blocks north of the project area, which is a newer construction commercial building. Moving to the opposite end of North First Street, we are now facing the development site at the corner of River Street and North First Street. Past the development site outlined in yellow, we can see the residential built context, a six-story apartment building. We are on River Street, looking down North First Street, the project area outlined in yellow, the development site, rather, outlined in yellow on the left. Rotating left, we are now looking down River Street. On the left-hand side would be the River Ring Development Site along with the East River. We're looking north and will now turn to look away from the development site at the same corner, and this is an image of the Con Edison Peaker Plant from the corner of North and, North River Street and North First, facing away from the project area. We're now moving to the opposite end of the block and are now on Metropolitan Avenue, looking south down River Street. On the left, we see the project area in blue, and in the distance, we see one of the Domino Sugar Developments as well as a glimpse, glimpse of Domino Park. Viving left, we're facing the develop, the project area in blue on the corner of Metropolitan and River. And facing west, this is the corner of River Street and Metropolitan, facing Kent Avenue. The project area is on the right side of the image. On the other side, here, jumping to Kent Avenue, we are at the northernmost part of the project area, facing the East River. On the left, we see the project area, and on the right is the newer construction commercial building. And finally, we are now facing the development site on the corner of Kent and Metropolitan, facing southeast, and will now see the proposed development. The proposed development, we see in this image with River Ring Towers in the background, the proposed development is an eight-story, six-FAR mixed-use commercial residential building with approximately twenty-nine-thousand-five-hundred square feet of residential uses and three-thousand-three-hundred square-foot ground floor commercial space. Forty dwelling units, twelve of which be income-restricted under Mih option two, with no car parking and twenty bike parking spaces. The proposed actions include a zoning map amendment to change existing M-one-four district to an M-one-four R-seven-X MX-eight district. The R, the M-one-four R-seven-X district is a special mixed-use district and permits residential use with a maximum FAR of six, community facility uses with a maximum FAR of five, and commercial and manufacturing uses at two FAR. Where residential development triggers Mih requirements, height and setback reg, as this, as this development does, height and setback regulations are modified to permit a maximum base height of a hundred-and-five feet and a maximum building height of a hundred-and-forty-five feet. In order to facilitate the development and to map the MX-eight special mixed-use district across the project area, the applicant seeks to amend section one-two-three-six-three of the zoning resolution to add R-seven-X to the residential option for a mixed-use district. In addition to the text amendment to section one-two-three-six-three, the applicant seeks to map Mih co-terminus with the project area and, and would amend appendix F of the zoning resolution by establishing the area as a mandatory inclusionary housing area. Mih options are option one requires twenty-five percent of the residential floor area be income-restricted for residents with incomes averaging sixty percent AMI, with a minimum of ten percent of the housing to be affordable at forty percent AMI. And option two requires thirty percent of residential floor area be income-restricted for residents with incomes averaging eighty percent AMI. The applicant has proposed option two with twelve units income-restricted at eighty percent This application requires a racial equity report on housing and opportunity. The proposed development would provide twelve new income-restricted units in the neighborhood at eighty percent AMI. The estimated household earnings at eighty percent AMI range from seventy-four thousand seven hundred for one person and a hundred-and-six, a hundred-six thousand seven hundred for a family of four. Greenpoint, Williamsburg has seen a thirty percent increase in housing production compared to an eight percent in the borough as a whole and six percent across the city. Though the neighborhood has produced significant housing, the neighborhood also has a low vacancy rate. This development would provide income-restricted units on vacant land in a desirable waterfront This graph illustrates the racial and ethnic composition of CD-one compared to the borough and city. The population of CD-one is predominantly white non-Hispanic and Hispanic Latino, with the percentage of white non-Hispanic residents at sixty-two percent, which exceeds both the borough at thirty-five and city at thirty-one. The percentage of Hispanic-Latino residents sit at twenty-one percent compared to nineteen percent in Brooklyn and twenty-eight percent citywide. This graph, we see the percent change in racial and ethnic groups between 2010 and 2020 in area population. The largest growth, the largest growth is seen in the Asian non-Hispanic population with some, with a smaller percentage of the total population of CD-one has experienced a fifty-five percent growth compared to a forty-three percent increase borough-wide and thirty-four percent, forty-three percent, rather, increased borough-wide and thirty-four percent increased citywide. The second-largest percentage, percentage increase is seen in black non-Hispanic population, though also a larger, a smaller population, percentage of the population in CD-one, with thirty-two percent growth compared to, compared to a decrease of nine percent borough-wide and a decrease of five percent citywide. In summary, this is an application for a zoning map amendment, zoning text amendment to section one-two-three-six-three, and a zoning text amendment to appendix F. And it's to facilitate the development of an eight-story, approximately thirty-two-thousand-nine-hundred square-foot, six-FAR mixed-use commercial residential building with forty dwelling units, twelve income-restricted under Mih option two in the north side neighborhood of Williamsburg, Brooklyn, at Community District One. Thank you, and I'm happy to take questions.
Great. Thank you very much. That was all very clear. I just want to take a quick walk through history for a second about the prior actions that were taken here. So this is right on the cusp of the Greenpoint, Williamsburg rezoning area from 2005. Is that correct?
Yes, correct.
And it's my understanding that this was left out of that prior rezoning because this, this site was, this, this entire area was owned by Con Edison. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Can you go to that next slide, the one with the pink?
Yes.
There we go. Okay. So then in 2021, as part of the River Ring rezoning, this entire area was rezoned to enable the two buildings that you showed in the illustration with a thousand units plus the project area here became an M-one-four. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. What is the status of those River Ring buildings, if that's what we refer to them as? So what, what is the current status?
We've, as far as I'm aware, we have not heard of the status of River Ring, something I think we can follow up on.
Approved, but has not yet been developed.
Yes.
So it's not underway. Okay. And the MX-eight designation here is, it would connect this area to the other existing MX-eight that already exists in the, in the neighborhood here. Is that right?
Yes. The, and just to clarify as well, the rezoning included, for the M-one-four includes the project area and then the lot to the north as well.
The lot to the north that's still owned by Con Edison?
No.
I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, the block to the north, the lot to the north, yes, is owned by Con Edison.
The lot to the north is owned by Con Edison?
Yes. The block, there's another block to the north, the recently constructed commercial building that was also rezoned M-one-four in the River Ring rezoning.
And do we know of Con Edison's plans on this, this site right here adjacent to two-thirty Kent?
Yes. Con Edison was made aware of the rezoning and has not raised any issues and does not have any plans to develop the site themselves.
And it's completely vacant?
Yes. Thirteen-thousand-ish square feet.
Good. All right. Thank you. Commissioner Sorio.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the presentation. My, my question is actually built on both of the questions, as by the chair.
My question is actually built on both of the questions, as by the Chair. When you follow up on the status of River Ring, I would specifically like to know what is the timeline, the projected timeline for the climate change adaptation measures that were discussed at the moment? That's the first question. The second question is connected with that, which is whether we can know, what is the, how does that, how does the construction of the infrastructure improvements affect the conclusions of what we are estimating right now through the EAS in terms of this particular development, that would be, just for context? The second set of questions have to do with the proposed MX combination. I was wondering if you can say a little, or if we can hear more when this comes back in terms of how will we be attracting, what type of industrial uses, you know, would be in that mix, will be the plan for that? A lot of it, I think, has to do with sort of prior conversations that were part of both River Ring, but also Domino in terms of the promises that were made to the community in terms of, in that regard, in terms of the community facilities and so forth, which... One other quick comment, thank you so much for the clarification about the location of the project in relation to the 100-year floodplain, that was very clear. I think that the EAS is very useful in helping us understand how, whether that's, how, although that is correct, the productivity level rise here will compromise the lot, and so I'm wondering if we can also bring that into the mix. My understanding from the materials that were shared is that the first floors, if that happened, would be basically floodable, right? It's a lobby and then the retail space, but then, you know, if that's the space that is offered to the community, you know, what are they supposed to do?
Thank you for the question, Commissioner. I will defer to the applicant on programming for this ground-floor space. I would like to highlight that the applicant has stated that the proposed development would be designed and constructed, of course, in accordance with applicable city and state flooding and erosion regulation, and the development foundation will be dry-proofed and designed to resist hydrostatic pressure. That doesn't talk about community, that doesn't talk about the use on the ground floor, but I'll defer to the applicant to speak more to that.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that. And it's clear in the EAS that, if, that the provision is considering the lifespan of the building anyways, so we're talking about 2050, 2080. It's just that, you know, that's sort of what is being offered in terms of what the community has prioritized in the past, and so I would love to hear more in terms of what's the plan for that. And then one last question, if you don't mind, which is, thanks so much for pointing out and for asking, Chair, about the plan for the Con Ed side. I have a similar question, but for the Peker. So my understanding is that this may be part of, sort of like the longer-term plan of decommissioning this infrastructure, but I'm wondering if there's already some plans or any idea of what will happen with this lot, or maybe it's too soon and we don't know. I guess I'm trying to build the longer-term puzzle, because a lot of the open space that you referenced has not been built yet, and so I'm trying to understand exactly where we are as well. Thank you so much.
Yes, yeah, and in terms of, yeah, open space, we'll have the, as you mentioned, once completed, the River Ring WPAA. In terms of the Peker plant, I think that's a long-range discussion. Happy to also follow up with more details, yeah.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right, great, thank you very much. This item is now certified, and we're going to move on to the next item for today, Ryan. Thank you.
Thank you, Dacia. The third item on our agenda is the certification of the UDAP designation and disposition of city-owned property and an acquisition approval in Manhattan Community District 11. Presenting for the first time to the Commissioner is Trevor Lovitz.
All right, Trevor, welcome. Glad to have you here.
Glad to be here. This thing is on. Ryan, I just moved this on my... Yep, got the hang of it. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Today, I will be presenting Timbale Terrace. This is a project that will bring new affordable housing to East Harlem. The proposed development would replace an existing parking lot owned by the adjacent New York Police Department's 25th Precinct on the east side of Park Avenue between East 118th and East 119th Streets in East Harlem, Manhattan, Community District 11. The applicant team comprises of three New York City agencies, the Department of Housing Preservation and Development, the Department of Citywide Administrative Services, and the New York Police Department. Two actions are being sought to facilitate the development. The first is the designation of an Urban Development Action Area and Urban Development Action Area Projects, or UDAP. Approval of the UDAP, which would allow HPD to dispose the development site to developers selected by HPD. The second action, led by DCAS and NYPD, is for the acquisition of property by the city to acquire approximately 29,000 square feet of floor area within the proposed development to be used as replacement parking for the 25th Precinct. Approval of these actions would facilitate the development of a 19-story, 100% affordable, mixed-use development with 341 affordable housing units, 75 parking spaces, 9.7,000 square feet of community facility space, including a new performance space for the Afro-Latin Jazz Alliance. The project area is coterminous with the development site and covers approximately 23,000 square feet of lot area across 11 contiguous city-owned lots. The L-shaped zoning lot has approximately 202 feet of frontage on Park Avenue to the west, 140 feet on East 119th Street to the north, and about 90 feet on East 118th Street to the south. The surrounding area is primarily residential in character, interspersed community facility and institutional uses, with neighborhood-serving retail along the major avenues. Mid-blocks here tend to feature mid-rise attached apartment buildings, while towers predominate along Park and Lexington Avenues. Industrial uses and surface parking lots are prevalent along Park Avenue, in particular about one block and two blocks north of the project area. However, in the years since the East Harlem rezoning, such lots have increasingly been redeveloped with high-rise residential towers. Notably, we want to draw your attention to work that is permitted for the construction of 220-story towers on the west block of Park Avenue immediately opposite the project site. Similar development is likewise occurring elsewhere in East Harlem, either through infill development on vacant lots and along the neighborhood's primary corridors. Zoning districts in the surrounding area include R-72, R-7B, R-7D, R-8A, R-10, and a mixed-use M-16/R10 zoning district. This project area is owned R-10 and R-7B with a C-25 commercial overlay. Approximately 5,000 square feet is located within the R-7B contextual zoning district, which you can see along East 119th Street, and the entirety of the Park Avenue frontage within 100 feet of Park Avenue is owned R-10 and falls within the special East Harlem Corridors zoning district, which in combination with the contextual R-7B zoning district require that the proposed development be constructed under the Quality Housing and MIH area regulations. The entirety of the project area and surrounding areas are within the transit zone, which exempts parking requirements for new affordable housing developments and is well-served by mass transit. The food-retail expansion to support health or fresh zone also covers the project and all of East Harlem. So a quick look back at a few key milestones that have led us to this opportunity to redevelop an underutilized parking lot. So we're going all the way back to the 1960s, when an area encompassing East 116th to the south and East 124th Street to the north, between Park and Lexington Avenues, was designated as the UPAKA sub-area in the 1968 Harlem, East Harlem Urban Renewal Plan. Under this URP, many of the pre-war buildings within this geography were subsequently erased through eminent domain, including the structures that formed the development site in 1975. The spin-off UPAKA Urban Renewal Area was formed in 1993 as a freestanding URP, and this expired in 2008. Jumping ahead to 2016, the parking lot of the 25th Precinct was identified as one of four publicly-owned sites suitable for affordable housing development in the 2016 East Harlem Neighborhood Plan. This is a community-driven planning study led by CB11, the City Council, and the BP's Office to form land use and other recommendations in advance of the city-led rezoning. In its recommendations for the precinct site, the neighborhood plan recommended rezoning the stretch of Park Avenue to R-10 to maximize the number of affordable units that could be produced on publicly-owned sites. The following year, DCP moved ahead with the East Harlem Neighborhood Study, building on the recommendations of the neighborhood plan, and rezoning 92 blocks along Park, Lexington, Third and Second Avenues, and East 116th Street. A portion of Park Avenue encompassing the project area saw one of the greatest increases in allowable bulk and density under the 2017 rezoning, with an R-72 district being rezoned to the existing R-10 zoning. In 2019, HPD released an RFP for affordable housing development on the two city-owned sites, the 25th Precinct parking lot and the East Harlem Multi-Service Center, with the goal to create over 600 affordable housing units in East Harlem. A community visioning session was held the same year, hosted by HPD and DCP, to inform the program of the two RFP sites. Key among the findings for the precinct site was an emphasis on deep affordability and community facility space for the performing arts. Finally, in 2021, HPD selected Mega Development and the Lantern Organization to develop Timbale Terrace. Much of the built form in the vicinity of the project area has been shaped by government intervention in the geography of the former UPAKA Urban Renewal Area. We just want to call out a few of these developments in particular. You can see Knights' UPAKA Sites Five and Six along Lexington Avenue. More recently, new affordable housing developments have taken shape in this area, including Prospera Hall in 2014, which you can see immediately to the south, and Schaefer Hall directly to the east. Both of these are six-story supportive housing developments constructed with HPD financing and operated by the Lantern Organization, which is the sponsor of Timbale Terrace. The 116th Street subway station, which is served by the 4 and 6 subway lines, is located just two blocks south of the project area on Lex. And the Metro-North Railroad, which runs directly east of the project area, along Park Avenue, has a stop at 125th Street, about six blocks north of the project area. There are also crosstown M-102 and M-116 buses running along East 116th Street, and M-98, M-101, and M-103 buses running north-south on Lexington Avenue. Open space in the surrounding area contains a mixture of community gardens, of which there are many, school playgrounds, and parks administered by the Parks Department. Among these are Eugene McCabe Field, the Dr. Ronald E. McNair Playground, Harlem Art Park, and the entrance to Marcus Garvey Park, all within a five-block distance of the project area. Community facilities and institutional uses in the surrounding area include the landmark designated St. Paul and Holy Rosemary Roman Catholic Church, which you can see directly south of the outlined project area, and the Academy of St. Paul and St. Anne, MS and MS-7, the Samuel Stern School, and Hunter's Silverman School of Social Work. We also want to note that the recently expanded Henry J. Carter Specialty Hospital occupies an entire city block, two blocks to the north. So here are some photos of existing conditions in the project area. As you can see, it is an unimproved surface parking lot, used by the 25th Precinct as parking for its fleet and staff vehicles. It has a total capacity of 75 spaces. And an existing curb cut on East 119th Street provides access to this parking lot. The site is bounded by East 118th and East 119th Streets, both are narrow streets, and as we mentioned before, there is 202 feet of frontage along Park. You can see here the Park Avenue viaduct. We want to note here that this segment of the Park Avenue viaduct, which is over a century old, is due to be completely replaced beginning this year. The replacement structure is due to feature noise-reducing design components, as well as aesthetic and streetscape improvements on Park Avenue, although the exact shape of these is not yet determined. So on to the actions, two actions are being requested to facilitate the development of Timbale Terrace. As discussed in previous slides, this project area has been identified for redevelopment on multiple occasions due to its location, size, ownership, and existing use. HPD therefore seeks approval of the UDAP, and the designation of the UDAP, rather. UDAPs require the area subject to the designation and approval to meet certain eligibility criteria pursuant to Article 16 of the General Municipal Law. In broad strokes, Article 16 requires that the area's current conditions impair or arrest the sound growth and development of the vicinity, and that the proposed redevelopment of such area will remediate negative factors and will protect and promote health, safety, growth, and development. This UDAP will also allow HPD to dispose of the project area to the Lantern Organization and mega contractors, the winners of the 2019 RFP. As for the acquisition, after the completion of the proposed development, the city will undertake the site selection process to acquire approximately 29,000 square feet on the first and second floors of the proposed redevelopment to house 75 replacement parking spaces for the NYPD. You can see here the proposed development. The proposed development will contain approximately 239,200 square feet of floor area, equalling 10.31 FAR, the adjusted maximum FAR of the zoning law, just for reference, is 10.41. The building's bulk would be as of right, under existing zoning. As you can see, along Park Avenue, the proposed development will rise to a base height of 155 feet before setting back 15 feet and rising to a max height of 196 feet. When factoring in the mechanical bulkhead and rooftop solar rate, the building rises to a height of 206 feet. Along 119th Street and within the R-7B portion of the zoning lot, the proposed development will step down to six stories with a height of 64 feet, somewhat mirroring the street wall of the adjacent 25th Precinct. Vehicle and pedestrian entrances for NYPD would be located on the building's East 119th Street frontage. No accessory parking would be provided for the building's residential and community facility uses. The building would include three rooftop terraces for tenants at the Third, Eighth, and 16th floors, and rooftop solar, as well as passive house sustainable design elements such as high-performance walls, super insulated, high-performance windows, excuse me, super-insulated walls and roofs, thermal break materials minimizing heat loss, and centralized energy recovery. The community facility space at Timbale Terrace is primarily broken up between the cellar and first floors and the 16th floors. On to the ground floor and cellar space, the centerpiece of this is a double-height recital hall with a total capacity of 275 seats located in the cellar with the mezzanine on the ground floor. This would serve as the Afro-Latin Music and Arts, or ALMA, center, the designated performance space of the Afro-Latin Jazz Alliance, which will be the primary tenant on the ground floor and cellar. Other community facility floor area on the ground floor and cellar will consist of practice rooms, teaching classrooms, a recording facility, music library, lounge, community room, and a street-facing café activating Park Avenue. The resident, the entrance, which you can see in this rendering at the top, to the ALMA Center, will be located along Park Avenue, separate from the resident entrance along East 118th Street. The ALMA Center will provide multi-generational programs with services that would include free music education for children, school-based music programs, a youth orchestra, anti-gun violence initiatives, a music and dance program for older adults attending New York City senior centers, and a music education program for formerly incarcerated population. The 16th floor residential amenities that we alluded to earlier, these will include space for a qualified nonprofit to provide services for the formerly homeless tenants. The nonprofit space will measure 2,740 square feet and will host onsite case managers and social workers, educational employment specialists, health and wellness coordinators, and peer engagement specialists. The 16th floor will also feature residential amenities, including fitness, cycling, and yoga studios. The 16th floor will also have one of the three rooftop terraces. These will total 11,120 square feet of private rooftop access for building residents. Pursuant to Local Law 78 of 2021, this application requires a racial equity report on housing and opportunity because it would increase the permitted residential floor area by at least 50,000 square feet. The city's Displacement Risk Index, or DRI, estimates comparative levels of residential displacement risk for New York City's neighborhoods. The DRI ranks neighborhoods from lowest to highest risk based on recent population characteristics, including housing conditions and market pressures. In this index, the neighborhood tabulation area of East Harlem North, which you can see on this map, is classified as experiencing higher displacement risks, as a community overwhelmingly consisting of renters, with median household incomes averaging at $36,000 a year. Timbale Terrace promises to address some of these displacement pressures in East Harlem by producing new affordable housing at AMI bands achievable by most area residents. The development will be financed through HPD's extremely low- The development will be financed through HPD's Extremely Low and Low Income Affordability, or ELLA, program. ELLA's term sheet requires that a minimum of eighty percent of units are affordable to households, earning up to eighty percent of area median incomes. Up to twenty percent of the units may have rents affordable to moderate-income residents earning between ninety and a hundred percent of AMI. Finally, ELLA requires that at least fifteen percent of units will be set aside for formerly homeless households. The proposed affordability levels of Timbali Terrace surpass the requirements of the ELLA term sheet. All three hundred and forty-one units at Timbali Terrace will be affordable to households earning between thirty and eighty AMI. You can see the proposed affordability distribution on the chart here, with corresponding twenty-twenty-three AMI levels and rents. As you can see in the chart top right, the three hundred and forty-one units will be comprised of the mix of studios, one, two, and three-bedroom units. The tentative unit distribution outlines twenty-eight percent of the units as studios, forty-one percent as one-bedrooms, twenty-five percent as two-bedrooms, and five percent as three-bedroom units. Furthermore, Timbali Terrace will set aside approximately twenty-nine percent of its units for formerly homeless households. The ninety-nine supportive housing units will be financed through the New York City fifteen program. Fifteen Fifteen is a New York City-funded, project-based rental assistance program that provides affordable housing and supportive services to New Yorkers who are homeless or at risk of homelessness, with the goal of helping them move to long-term stability. Tenants placed in the supportive housing units will pay up to thirty percent of their income towards rent, and will be referred to by the HRA. Circling back real quick to the findings of the RER. Between two thousand and ten and two thousand and twenty, East Harlem has experienced modest losses in Latino and Black populations compared to the large gains we can see in this graph by the areas non-Hispanic white and Asian populations. East Harlem remains, however, a predominantly Latino and Black community. Just under half of East Harlem, some one hundred and twenty-two thousand residents are of Hispanic origin, and twenty-seven percent are African-American. In conclusion, this application entails the disposition of city-owned property, the designation of an urban development action area and urban development action area project, approval of the project, and acquisition of property by the city for the replacement parking. Approval of these actions will facilitate the development of a nineteen-story mixed-use tower containing three hundred and forty-one permanently affordable units, ninety-nine of which will be supportive, and nineteen point seven thousand square feet of community facility space, the centerpiece of which will be the Afro-Latin Music and Arts Center. Thank you for listening, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you very much, and very clear. Congrats on your first presentation. Let me just ask one point of clarification, although I think I know the answer here. The four-story NYPD twenty-fifth precinct will continue to remain?
Oh yes, the precinct, yes.
The precinct will stay, and the acquisition will be for the twenty-nine thousand square feet for their accessory parking spaces, is that right?
That's right, and they've got all their parking back. The surface parking lot's currently seventy-five spaces, and the proposed development outlines seventy-five spaces of replacement parking.
Okay, got it, okay, thank you. Let me go to Commissioner Marine.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, and welcome on your first presentation. My questions are around the police parking and the ALMA Center. I did have a question about breakdown of units. On the police parking, is that going to be a space that's condo-ed out to the police department, and so they'll be responsible for their share of maintenance as well?
My understanding is it's going to be condominium.
Great. The ALMA Center, is that a community facility? Will that also be condoed out?
That's a community facility space.
Do you know if there are tax credits involved in this building, and if the ALMA Center's paying rent, or are they taking advantage of a basis of tax credit?
I don't know, the terms of that arrangement will have HPD...
That would be helpful. And then, lastly, I want to comment on the three-bedrooms, because I see that there are some three-bedrooms in this building, and it's only two percent of the entire population. We're seeing larger families needing larger units, and I'm not understanding why we wouldn't include more units here, more three-bedroom units here.
HPD has heard this argument a lot before, especially from members of the community.
Exactly.
I've heard them speak to financing difficulties associated with these three-bedroom units, and in some of their other UDAPs in East Harlem, they are pushing for a larger share of three-bedroom units. I'm sure they'll have plenty to say on that point.
They are difficult to finance. I do understand that, I am in the development world, and some of us here on this stage are as well, but there is a reality here as well. You know, we have a high influx of folks coming in that need housing. We have folks that are here that need housing, and they're screaming for larger units, and we're not providing them. So I think that we need to start considering that.
And you'll see in the beacon, which is the second RFP site that we mentioned before, a greater share of three-bedroom units.
Right.
I don't think that was the focus in this development, but I'm sure HPD will be able to speak to that more directly.
I would appreciate it, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Goodrich?
I was actually going to ask about the same thing about the three bedrooms. So Commissioner Marine took it away there, but I share the same concerns.
Great, thank you. Vice Chair Knuckles?
Just an observation, and Commissioner Marine's critique is hopefully duly noted by HPD. But I know some of us were on the commission when we rezoned East Harlem several years ago. And I would just say that this project, as planned, I think embodies a lot of the aspirations expressed during that process by the community. The council member at that time, you remember, was the speaker of the council. So I would hope some remediation around the apartment size is addressed, but I can't help but hope that this project really fulfills all of the goals that it has, because demographically, I think it addresses a lot of the concerns that the community expressed, and the concerns that they had around rezoning. So I think this is a terrific project, and hopefully it will be realized in totality.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Commissioner Bozard?
I just want to echo the vice chairman's comments, but also ask, the New York Fifteen Fifteen Rental Assistance Program, the services provided through that program, are they onsite for the tenants onsite?
So yes, the community facility space we discussed on the sixteenth floor, that's specifically for the purpose of providing onsite services for the supportive housing units.
Okay, thank you, that's all.
Great, thank you very much. Congrats again, this item is certified. Thank you. Ryan?
Thanks, Trevor. The fourth item on our agenda is a pre-hearing review of a zoning map and zoning text amendment in Brooklyn Community District twelve, and Anif Yazdi is here to present.
Hello, welcome.
Hi, good afternoon. All right. Good afternoon, good being here. This is a pre-hearing item for an application that was certified previously. The application is by the Ramika Property Group for a zoning map amendment from a C eight-two to an R seven-X district with a C two-four commercial overlay, and a zoning text amendment to map a mandatory inclusionary housing area to facilitate a new eleven-story multifamily residential building with approximately sixty thousand square feet, or five point nine FAR, forty-three dwelling units, including eleven permanently income-restricted units. Details are available here. Project area is located in the Kensington Flatbush section of Brooklyn Community District twelve, near the intersection of Coney Island Avenue and Beverly Road. Project area is located along Coney Island Avenue, a hundred feet wide, between Hinckley Place at ninety feet and Beverly Road at eighty feet, around six blocks to the south of Prospect Park. Project area can be situated between Kensington to the west and the Prospect Park South neighborhood to the east. The project area enjoys access to subway and bus service with a queue station at Beverly Road, point three miles away, and the Church Avenue Station offering F and G services, point six miles away. B one oh three, BM three, and B four, BM four lines also serve the area as bus routes. On June twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three, Community Board twelve voted to support the proposal, with thirty-two in favor, two opposed, and no abstentions, on the condition that the building height does not exceed seventy feet and the zoning designation be changed to R six A. So that's R six A instead of R seven X, is the community board's proposal. On August eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three, Borough President Reynoso voted in favor of the application, stating, among other things, that the applicant's proposed height and bulk along Coney Island Avenue is, quote, "appropriate, given the surrounding context and street width of one hundred feet," end quote. BP Reynoso further alluded to the seven point nine percent increase in the CB twelve population between two thousand and twenty-ten and two thousand and twenty, and the corresponding two point nine percent growth in housing units over the same period. The following is a view of the one-hundred-foot Coney Island Avenue corridor facing north from Beverly Road. You can see the project area and development site on the left-hand side of the screen. Following up from a question that came up during certification about unit count, you can see the unit counts here for the development site. There's a mix of ten one-bedroom and thirty-three two-bedroom units. So we have two and nine of those income-restricted respectively there, with forty-three total. We crunch the numbers for some of the possible results of the Community Board twelve condition. Regarding the Community Board R six A recommendation, the designation would result in a unit loss of fifteen units, when assuming an average unit size of thirteen hundred square feet. Please note this figure would be even higher if the applicant opts for smaller units allowed by the R seven X and R six A designation. That's all for this pre-hearing item. The applicant will be here on Wednesday to answer more questions, but I'm happy to answer some today as well.
Great, we're all set. Thank you very much. We'll pick this one up on Wednesday. Thank you.
Thanks, Anif. The fifth item on our agenda is a pre-hearing review of a notice of intent to acquire office space in Manhattan Community District one, and our presenter is Francesca Bruce.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Nice to see you again so soon. So this is a notice of intent to acquire office space by the New York City Department of Citywide Administrative Services, or DCAST, and the Department of Design and Construction, or DDC, pursuant to Section one ninety-five of the New York City Charter. This will facilitate the renewal of lease of DDC's office space at Forty Worth Street in Lower Manhattan Community District one. The Department of Design and Construction provides citywide design and construction services for public works projects on behalf of other city agencies. Forty Worth Street is a sixteen-story office building, highlighted here in yellow. It is located in Tribeca, a neighborhood generally characterized by a range of uses, including multifamily residential buildings, mixed-use residential and commercial buildings, commercial buildings, and manufacturing buildings. DDC is seeking to renew their lease of approximately eight thousand six hundred and eighty-three square feet of office space at this location without expansion or alteration. The agency's main office is in Long Island City, Queens, with this facility at Forty Worth Street serving as an agency hub for their Manhattan operations since nineteen ninety-eight. This is an area map with north at the top, and Forty Worth Street occupies most of the block bounded by Forty Worth, excuse me, by Worth Street to the north, Church to the east, Thomas to the south, and West Broadway to the west. Forty Worth is located on a split lot, with the majority of the lot zoned C six four, and the remaining western frontage on West Broadway zoned C six two A. The C six two A portion of the lot also falls within the special Tribeca mixed-use district, and most of the surrounding area is improved with five-to-seven-story mixed-use buildings. But there are several larger footprint buildings in the immediate vicinity of Forty Worth Street. Those include the landmarked Western Union Building to the west, Fifty-Six Leonard Street, also known as the Jenga Building to the north, and the AT&amp;T Long Lines Building to the east. The site is well-served by public transit. It's within four blocks of MTA stations providing access to the one, two, three, R, W, A, C, and E subway lines. And it's also less than half a mile from the PATH terminal at World Trade, additionally well-served by ferry and numerous bus lines connecting to other areas of Manhattan and the outer boroughs. The office fronts on Worth Street, so here is a view from West Broadway looking southeast along Worth, with the primary entrance to Forty Worth midway down the block on the right. Here is another street view of the site, looking southwest down Church Street from Worth Street, showing a secondary entrance and a bike lane. And then finally, here is a street view of the accessible primary entrance to the building on Worth Street. Forty Worth Street is a sixteen-story office building with approximately five hundred ninety-one thousand nine hundred square feet of floor area, and the building occupies roughly a full block from Worth Street to Thomas Street, between West Broadway and Church Street. The ADA-accessible building is mostly occupied by office uses with retail on the ground floor and underground parking. The proposed office space at Forty Worth Street is located on the eighth floor of the building, and is accessible through a shared elevator bank. The eight thousand six hundred and eighty-three square foot office space is currently used as a DDC office hub for Manhattan operations, primarily serving DDC's Infrastructure Division. And the Infrastructure Division is responsible for capital construction work for the Department of Environmental Protection, the Department of Transportation, as well as all required work on water mains, sewers, streets, sidewalks, curbs, and streetlights. The office is also used by other DDC staff and is set up to hold project meetings and coordinate other agency work. The office space, which is outlined here in a dashed yellow line and highlighted, is used by thirty-five staff members full-time and by other staff on an as-needed basis. It includes seven offices, an open area with approximately twenty-two workstations, and approximately sixteen flex workstations, a staff pantry, a small copy plotter station, network room, small storage area, and a small waiting area, as well as two conference rooms. The larger of the two conference rooms can accommodate up to twenty people and is technologically equipped to host meetings with DDC contractors. DDC seeks to renew the lease of approximately eight thousand six hundred and eighty-three square feet of office space without expansion, retrofit, or alteration, which is anticipated to accommodate current and future staffing needs at this location. The current lease is set to expire on December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four, and so if renewed for a further twenty years, the lease would expire on December thirty-first, two thousand and forty-four. The proposed space meets the consideration of the applicable fair share criteria. The first of these criteria speaks to the suitability of the site to provide continued cost-effective operation for DDC. The second criteria relates to the suitability of the site's size and location for operational efficiency. The central Manhattan location with easy access to transit is ideal for staff commuting to the office, and the proposed office space has not been included in the citywide statement of needs and is also not a good candidate for relocation to a regional business district. DDC's main office is located in Long Island City, a regional business hub, and this satellite office is intended to support the agency's work in Manhattan. And so in summary, DDC and DCAST are filing a notice of intent to acquire office space for a twenty-year lease renewal of DDC's current office space at Forty Worth Street pursuant to Section one ninety-five of the city charter. Thank you so much, I'd be happy to answer questions.
Okay, thank you very much. That'll do it. We will pick this one up on Wednesday for a public hearing. Thank you.
The sixth item on our agenda is a post-referral review of a non-ULER modification to a previously approved special permit, and our presenter is Jasmine DePauley.
Hi, Jasmine, welcome.
Hi, everyone. Let me just wait for them to pull this up, and then we can get started. There you go. So good afternoon, commissioners. Sixty Wall Street is returning to the commission after being referred out to Manhattan Community Board one on June twenty-sixth. I may have pressed the wrong button. Sorry. Just a reminder, this is a private application for a non-ULER modification of two previously approved special permits. Today, the commission is going to vote on whether to approve the application as a non-ULER modification of the special permits. So here is a map of the project area. Sixty Wall Street is located in Manhattan Community District one in the financial district neighborhood of Lower Manhattan. neighborhood of Lower Manhattan. So today's vote is based on finding that there are no new zoning actions, no new waivers or other modifications being sought outside of the proposed modifications granted in the special permits, and then also that the findings made in the previously granted special permits remain valid. I'll talk through the findings for the covered pedestrian space in a moment, but for the seventy-four seventy-nine special permit, which is the second one on the left, this allows the transfer of development rights for a landmark building to an adjacent lot, and the findings state that the City Planning Commission shall give due consideration to the relationship between that landmark building and any new building developed on the adjacent lot regarding materials, design, scale, and location of bulk. This consideration was for the purpose of providing a harmonious architectural relationship finding between the two buildings, so Fifty-five Wall Street and Sixty Wall Street. LPC reviewed the changes to the exterior and confirmed that there is a harmonious architectural relationship between the two buildings of Fifty-five Wall Street and Sixty Wall Street, and that they had that meeting on January thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. I keep pressing the wrong button. So for the seventy-four eighty-seven special permit on the covered pedestrian space, or the CPS, the findings state that the CPS will provide comfort and convenience for the general public, that the space is located at or close to pedestrian circulation areas, the space should be obvious from the outside of the building, that there are appropriate commercial uses fronting the CPS, like a small store or cafe, and that the surrounding area has access to light and air, and lastly, that the subway connection is necessary to ease pedestrian movement and sidewalk congestion. Here is a rendering of the proposed CPS, showing the CPS view looking towards Pine Street. Here is a rendering showing another angle, and here's one more angle looking towards Wall Street. And then lastly, here is a rendering of the view from the MTA subway entrance and exit, so as if you're going up towards Wall Street. So, an update since the last review session. Manhattan CB One reviewed this application, and the board voted to disapprove with conditions. The focus was on recommendations for a number of changes to the proposed design and for a condition that the CPC should not consider the application until LPC has had the opportunity to calendar and review Sixty Wall Street for potential landmark status. So we've coordinated with LPC throughout this entire process, but just as a reminder, the building is not landmarked, and during the original approvals in nineteen eighty-five, the LPC did not review the interior public space as well. The application before you today is asking the Commission to consider whether the findings for the interior public space are still valid and whether there is a harmonious architectural relationship between Fifty-five and Sixty Wall Street remain valid as well. Based on our review of the application, we believe that the application meets the criteria as a non-ULEP modification, and we support the application and the flexibility from this process for the owner to update the public space and also contribute to the city's priorities for economic revitalization. So, thank you. That's the end of my presentation. Happy to take any questions.
Questions? Mr. Serrano?
Thank you, Chair. Just a quick question. Can you explain a little bit the implications for, I mean, if the implications of the CPC making a decision now without the LPC sort of reevaluating it? Can you explain, or can that happen afterwards? Can we somehow facilitate that? Explain a little bit, if you don't mind?
Sure.
Yes, how does our decision have an impact on that?
Sure, so the LPC did respond to those comments. They wrote a letter, which was also included in your packages, that stated that this, although it was researched and found that it does merit more review for landmark status, they have a number of priorities, and Sixty Wall Street is not part of their priorities for researching more into landmarking right now. So that's number one. They do agree that there should be flexibility for the space to be updated, as we agree as well that, like, for public spaces, they should have this flexibility to not, like, remain frozen in time. But in addition, the application before the Commissioners today does not consider, kind of, it doesn't have any findings that relate to any landmark status as well.
Thank you, that's useful. So in other words, our decision doesn't foreclose LPC's decision to investigate further. In addition to that, they've stated that this is not a priority right now.
That's correct.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions, comments? Okay, well, before we vote, I did want to make a quick note on this modification. Like many members of the public, I have a certain amount of fondness for the existing design of Sixty Wall Street. That said, it's not a landmark interior, and the owners have a right to update, refresh, and reposition this vacant commercial office building. And I will add that that is particularly important, considering that we are coming out of a global pandemic with New York City's commercial office space vacancies at approximately nineteen percent. While I'm sure that many people have opinions about the aesthetic qualities of design, the singular question that we have here before the Commission is whether the findings that the Commission made in its original approval of the special permit of Sixty Wall Street continue to be met with the proposed modifications to the covered pedestrian space, and that, in my view, is unquestionably the case here. So I want to congratulate the building owners on a new design that is a compelling update that shows a real amount of effort to create an appealing and welcoming space, as well as, of course, the usual thoughtful approach of the Department of City Planning staff that looks out for the interests of New Yorkers every day. So thank you to all of you. We value the perspectives that have been expressed about the current and proposed designs here, and expect that over time, this reimagined public space will be celebrated as a successful and vital part of the community. And with that, I will seek an assent by a voice vote. Do you have a question? We are voting right now. You have a question about the proposal, though? We can hold for a sec. This is a good moment to do it. I mean, we're about to vote, so if you have something to raise, then now's the time to raise it.
What we try to do with these modifications is we don't want to really relitigate the findings again. It's just really a check to see if there are, if any of the changes would be harmful to the finding or that we would, like, we wouldn't have approved it initially, right? So the question is, is when this was initially approved, would we have approved this, what's being shown today? And I believe that the department believes that the answer is yes, that this meets those findings in terms of access and visibility, and so, you know, that's why we're recommending the way we are. But that, it's not really revisiting them, it's more like, is this, is this sort of equal to what was approved prior?
I'll make one last note. For the harmonious architectural finding, it's that one's specific to the exterior, not the interior.
Yeah, that's an important distinction.
That's the harmoniousness between Fifty-five and Sixty outside.
Exactly.
And this is the interior piece.
Right, the second piece is the interior.
Okay. Other questions? Go ahead. Now's a good time, if you have them.
Yeah, this is a vote for, like, an assent by show of hands or a yea or nay kind of thing, to send a letter to the Department of Buildings that this modification is consistent with prior approvals. Yeah, we're not going to, we're not going to ask you for your vote yea or nay, we're just going to say.
Okay, with that, I'm going to seek assent by a voice vote to send an approval letter to the Buildings Department. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay, you guys have it. Thank you, Jasmine.
All right, thanks. The seventh item on our agenda is a post-referral review of a non-ULEP City Planning Commission certification. This certification is for two forty-four East one oh six Street, the Share NYC site, so it's the same exact site as the UDOT and disposition that you've seen in the past and that we'll discuss today. The certification is really just to confirm that no transit easement is needed for the site, and so we have a letter from the MTA confirming that no easement is required from their perspective, and we have a letter from the Community Board that gave no objection to the action. Jose Trusios is here, he's going to sort of talk about the agency recommendation for UDOT, but can also field any questions on the CPC certification.
Hi, everyone, how are you? I'm pretty sure you guys remember this project here in WC. There were a lot of questions about the thirty-two rooming units and the definition and how they were allocated in the building. Next slide, please. Oh, sorry.
You can do it yourself there.
Okay, yes, yes. Just to quickly do a project recap, HPD is seeking the acquisition of this vacant portion of the block, twenty-nine, and the disposition of such a city-owned property. As Ryan mentioned, there was an application that was filed on July nineteen. It was, well, it's not a ULEP, it was, you know, referred to the Community Board for approval, and they returned the application on July twenty-fifth, I believe, and we got the MTA approval or confirmation that they will not need an easement on August eleven, as recently. There was a public hearing for this application on July thirteen, where HPD and the applicant or the development team answered questions and clarified some of the little details about the programming of the proposal. Quickly to summarize on this, DCP recommends approval of the application. The Department believes that, you know, with the scarce resources of public available land, there is important to try to utilize every single piece of publicly available land that HPD has to develop as many, you know, housing units as possible. In this case, as you guys probably recall, there was a lot of conversation about the nineteen ninety-five disposition of UDOT that limited the housing to rehabilitation or for less than four units. With this, sharing with C and innovative process and innovative approach that HPD is seeking to develop, we are housing about thirty-two, hopefully, members of the community in Harlem on this project and providing a lot more sufficient than the need that is needed in New York at large. Quickly to just recap on the project, there will be nineteen thousand square feet of community facility, space in the area similar to the project that was just presenting in Harlem with Invallet Terrace, there will be onsite services for our community facility use, and thirty-two units. There will be also two ADA batteries per floor. That's something that I was trying to get a little more clearance on this, but that there is the project, and now I don't know if you guys have any questions.
Mr. Gold.
So, just so I'm clear, MTA says that the transit easement is not required, and from our perspective, we're just validating that, I guess? Is that right?
Yeah, the process for the Sonora Resolution ninety-five zero four oh one will require that any property that falls within the transit easement, special transit, and land use district had to require a certification that either easement is required or not.
Got it, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, it's one of those unusual, we have to confirm that that engagement was done, and that's what this is.
It was first, sorry, not to guard you, but it was first determined in two thousand thirteen, reconfirmed in twenty twenty-two, and they issued a new memo in August, last week, pretty much.
Great. Okay, I don't see other questions, so this will be another voice vote here. So I will seek assent by a voice vote to send an approval letter to the Buildings Department. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. You guys have it, thanks, Jose.
And Jose has covered our first future votes, so we will skip that. And then also on Wednesday, we'll be voting on twenty-seven sixty-one Plum Second Street rezoning, Department is recommending approval for that. Fourteen sixty, fourteen eighty, Sheridan Boulevard, and I know there were some, did you want to, you have any questions on?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I do have a couple of questions, but I'm wondering if this is the right time, can we go through them? Because, or, I know you're sending me the written comments from ULEP that haven't made it into the pipeline yet, but I do have some questions about the final EIS.
Certainly, we can try, if we hear the questions, we may just give you written comments. I'm not a EIS expert.
So, so, I, so can I, can I add more questions? Because I, I'm a little concerned in terms of the, I'm just going to outline really quickly. One, the impact on stormwater, I feel, I, after reading the final EIS, it sounds like the proposed action wouldn't have a difference from the no action, but there is a new CSO required, and because of the context of this redevelopment and the history of it, you know, you would understand why the preview, the prior use wouldn't sort of necessarily, but that's one question, and the relationship to the wetlands in that regard. And then on the shadows, I just want to understand from the response that we got from the developer, how are those shadow impacts going to be actually mitigated? The response talks about vegetation on the shoreline and two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that is going to be given to the, a state agency, but it's not very clear whether, you know, that's a one-time payment, or what exactly is that going to go to and so forth?
Certainly, my understanding on the shadows is that that is not a mitigation, it is a part of the project that avoids an impact. It's a distinction that is made in environmental review world, but we do have pretty detailed requirements for that because it is, you know, sometimes, sometimes mitigations are, we'll, we'll fix it when there's a problem, but in this case, there is, there is a program that's part of the project, and it includes the payments to the things. But we can get you, I think that we either have something very detailed in writing that we can share again, if it hasn't already been shared with the Commission, between now and Wednesday.
Thank you, thank you, yeah, because it sounds like in terms of the shadows, even though the, the FAEIS shows that there's an impact on the Bronx River itself outside of the rezoning area, but that's because it's on the river.
Yeah.
So therefore, the mitigation actions don't necessarily get to the, to the bulk of the problem. And then just finally, it sounds like there's a reduction in the overall amount of open space. Again, it's less than two percent, therefore, it's not significant, but it's just such an important component of the proposal, and so, so, yeah, if you can share with me a little bit more in terms of that, I understand the conclusions of the FAEIS, but I think that those, these important findings should be taken into account as we prepare to vote.
Okay.
Thank you.
One, one point about that, I mean, if there, if there's a question about the, it doesn't sound like there is, but if there were a question about the adequacy of the EIS, that's one thing, but it sounds like you think that we should be going further than what the EIS requires, at least as it relates to that two percent and things like that. Is that correct?
Well, some questions are actually about the interpretation of the results in the final EIS, but yes.
Okay, so, well, we should go through that with you and see where that lands.
Appreciate it.
Okay, yes, Commissioner Goodrich.
And I also think it would be helpful for me to have, like, the final breakdown of the BMI of the, like, affordable year.
Certainly, if we haven't shared that with you, we can, I believe it, it might have been in a previous package, but not, yeah, we can.
I have, I think most of them are moderate income, so that's why.
Yeah, I believe that, that is their intention, right, at this point. But understood.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah, we can circulate that. Again, all right, moving on, we have nine thirty-five St. Nicholas Avenue Building, Hotel Cecil and Mittens Playhouse Building, the John Berks Dizzy Gillespie Residence. These are all landmarks in, that are being, we're corresponding with the City Council on, and then one seventy-six Chelsea Street, which is a certification pursuant to And then 176 Chelsea Street, which is a certification pursuant to the South Richmond Special District. For post-hearing follow-ups, we have the Tompkinsville Esplanade Site Selections and DOT Pier. And I believe that Rosika is here with the agency's recommendation on this.
Hello, Rosika.
Hello. Good afternoon, Chair and Commissioners. I wanted to quickly note before staff recommendation that the applicant will be submitting a memo addressing the questions from the public hearing as a follow-up. The Department of City Planning staff supports the applicant's proposal seeking two site selection actions to select city-owned properties located on the waterfront at the Eastern Terminus of Victr Boulevard to be maintained as public open space and to construct a new purpose-built permanent pier along with operation and maintenance building for DOT dog builders. The city also seeks a change in the city map to facilitate a new waterfront esplanade along the Murry Herbert Avenue to be renamed as Cromwell Promenade along with mapping lines, pool, and an adjacent ad grade parking lot to the south as Parkland. The proposed city map amendments, if approved, would help to provide a safe waterfront area for a wide range of users and create direct connections to the waterfront, thereby improving biking and pedestrian networks and formalized parkland. This project will update infrastructure with multimodal transportation options along the Tompkinsville waterfront area and reconnect the surrounding community with the New York upper B. It is our recommendation that the project proceeds. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Also for post-hearing follow-up, we have 703 Myrtle Avenue rezoning. Anief is here with an agency recommendation.
Thank you. Good afternoon again. I'm here for a post-hearing follow-up. This application was certified on April 24. The public hearing was held on August 9, and the CPC vote is scheduled for September 13. Department supports this application, which would facilitate the development of a new eight-story mixed-use building with 54 dwelling units, of which 18 would be permanently income restricted at 703 Myrtle Avenue. The change in zoning districts to R7D C24 aims to address the development potential of the area in line with its current needs. The zoning text amendment to Appendix F to MAP Mih ensures that future developments in the project area will include the necessary provision for income-restricted housing. The proposed development plans to fully utilize the available 5.6 FAR along with commercial spaces amounting to 4,469 zoning square feet. The inclusion of 11 off-street parking spaces in the proposal seller is a voluntary decision in line with the project's vision. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much.
Okay, on our agenda, we have 180 Skirmerhorn Street. I'll say that the agency is working through the issues that were raised at the public hearing and will be returning the commission with follow-up and some recommendation. But the Brooklyn office is here with, I will just say, with some thoughts about the site in general. Is Jesse, Jesse, are you on Zoom?
I am. Apologies, I was not able to attend in person.
That's okay.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Ryan, and thank you, Commissioner. Continuing what Ryan said in response to the public hearing that we had last session, the department wanted to say that we do support housing in this project area, as previously said. And we do recommend that the applicant would prepare, recommend that the applicant come back and prepare to work with us on a rezoning to facilitate a housing or mixed-use project in the area as previously discussed. And we are still working on a formal recommendation and plan to come back to you all, back to plan to come back to the commission at the next session. Lastly, I note that there is, in your briefing package, a letter from the Downtown Brooklyn Partnership based on commenting on this project as well. That's all. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Jesse.
Okay. Also, we have for pre-hearing, post-hearing...
Hold on one second. Commissioner Benjamin wants to jump in.
Oh, I think Jesse's gone.
He might still be on Zoom.
I'm here.
Yeah, he's still there. Yeah.
Jesse, quick question. The Downtown Brooklyn Partnership supported this application, is that correct?
Yes.
And they, did they, I didn't read anything. They did not respond to the issue about whether this site wanted to be housing. Do you have any further information for us about what their opinion of that would be?
Of course, yeah. Actually, the, not to go against what you said, Commissioner Benjamin, but the last statement in their recommendation actually says they echo the Brooklyn Borough President and the members of this commission that they support that the site would be best optimized for residential development in the future. So, you know, they did say they support the project in terms of, you know, given their site constraints, the limits and amount of zoning. They were supportive of their proposed open space in response to their public realm plan. And recognizing those constraints, they were supportive of it. And then they end with saying, however, they echo the comments of this body and the Brooklyn Borough President, that they believe it would be better optimized for housing. So it does have a little there, but...
I don't remember the term. How long is the special permit for?
In perpetuity? Yeah, that they would be, that's, I mean, that's what they apply for.
And is it possible to put a term on it? Since they're not building anything, just bringing some stacker things.
Let us look into that and we can get back to you, but I think it's possible, yeah. It's unusual, yeah.
I agree, but since it's only surface parking with stackers and they are providing the little garden space and some decorative fencing as well as changing the entrance and exit. But that might be a way we could address the issue of when it should be housing or at least have them come back for another go-round about the housing potential.
We'll discuss that. Yep.
Thank you.
All right.
Any other questions on this particular item?
All right, we also have Belmont Osborne rezoning on, I believe, Chukie... He's not here. Oh, you're going to cover it? Okay, there. Okay, so Alex will be covering. Thanks, Alex.
So I'd just like to mention that the department does support this application. I think with the recommendation that they work closely with HPD on getting closer on the affordability numbers. We'd like to see some more movement on that. And we'll be following up with HPD to confirm that there is a path forward on those numbers. And so I just want to say that that's where the department is.
Thanks, Alex. Good. All right, any questions here?
One super quick recommendation. Thank you so much for that. If you can also brief the applicant in terms of electrifying NYC and all the potential energy improvements that could be incorporated now, that would be great. Thank you.
Will do.
Thank you so much.
All right, and then we have the final item on our agenda is the City of Yes for Carbon Neutrality. Niles Klingel is here with follow-up.
Hello, Commissioners. So I'm here today with the post-hearing follow-up, following the public hearing on July 26, at which we had 36 speakers in total, 32 in favor, four opposed. And just as a brief recap, we've heard approvals from the Manhattan, Queens, Bronx, and Brooklyn Borough halls. Have received 25 recommendations for approval from community boards, seven community boards recommending disapproval of the application and two waiving review of the application. At our pre-hearing meeting, there was a question about mapping out where the community boards who have responded are located. So to that end, we have provided this map here, which provides the rundown of community boards which voted in support of the application, recommending disapproval and waiving review. Just want to emphasize here that community boards which have not yet submitted a resolution in favor or recommending disapproval is not an indication that those community boards have been not involved in the process. So as I mentioned at our pre-hearing, department staff has been offering presentations to all community boards and with very few exceptions, has made multiple presentations to all community boards, received feedback and review from, in many cases, land use committees and other committees of community boards, but in some cases did not receive full resolutions from the full board at this point in the process. During the public hearing, as well as during the public review at large, we heard a number of pieces of feedback which pertain to topics that are larger than the zoning text amendment itself. And so I just want to quickly do a recap of those and explain the department's view on how they intersect or do not with the zoning text amendment. So the first was probably the most vociferous piece of feedback we received as a department, which is that the city should delay or modify the requirements of Local 97, which is, of course, the landmark piece of legislation, the part of the 2019 Climate Mobilization Act that will in particular, and in most pressing, begin finding buildings for carbon emissions that exceed limitations set in place in 2024. Those fines will kick in in 2025 based on operation during the year of 2024. And of course, as a piece of city council legislation that is administered by the Department of Buildings, it's not something that we have the power to affect as part of our zoning text amendment, but it's certainly something that we understand. And we are working with our partners at the Mayor's Office and DOB to implement the feedback that we've received here and do everything that we can as a department to support the final stage of implementation around Local 97. The second is that the proposal should, through zoning, mandate the use of clean or renewable energy in buildings or in developments. And it's certainly something that we understand. And of course, the whole project, spirit of the project is moving towards clean and renewable energy as the baseline for our city's operation. State law specifically speaks to the mix of clean and renewable energy powering our grid. The CLCPA stipulates that by 20, the state climate act stipulates that by 2040, our grid must be 100% renewable-based. And of course, the state, the utilities, and energy producers are all working towards that goal. It is not something that zoning, per se, has the power to stipulate that a new development obtain its electricity from a different source than the conventional grid. Our hope is to support the greening of the grid between now and 2040. Another piece of feedback that we heard in particular at the public hearing was that the proposal should map green zones or special districts which have unique rules and incentives that could align with particular geographies, whether those are industrial business zones or New York State disadvantaged communities. And this is certainly a worthy suggestion and something that we, as a department, are open to exploring in the future. That is certainly something that does not fit within the proposal as referred out and as studied in environmental review. Another piece of feedback that we heard was that the proposal should regulate who receives the benefits of investments made, whether those are solar, storage, or retrofitting to the building. And of course, the relationship between, for example, landlords and tenants is regulated by a number, a whole variable ecosystem of other regulations that zoning is ill-suited to regulate, things like who obtains the fiscal benefit from a solar panel on top of a roof. Excuse me. And finally, we also heard, in particular at the public hearing, requests for the proposal to address the proliferation of so-called last-mile facilities. And on that, I would note that there is an application before the department currently, a private application that would regulate last-mile facilities and is currently being reviewed. My understanding is that the application is currently working on a reasonable worst-case development scenario for that application. So that is our chance as a department, as a city, to consider the zoning around last-mile facilities. It's certainly something that is not able to be incorporated into this proposal at this stage of the process. Shifting to the 17 items, which I will not recap, recapitulate in detail, the 17 specific pieces of the proposal that relate to the zoning, I will quickly go over the feedback we received and the recommendations the department has relating to the four key areas. So first, on energy, just to recap, relating to removing zoning impediments to solar canopies on top of buildings and in parking lots, creating use regulations for community solar and energy storage systems across the city and creating a pathway for onshore wind in the future. The first piece, the first section that we heard feedback on, and which I'll touch on departmental recommendations about, is the first that this term that we're using in codifying the zoning resolution, energy infrastructure equipment, needs to more clearly articulate that the energy that we're talking about is renewable or clean. And that's certainly something that we're in line with and happy to take on. We don't want anyone inadvertently using these provisions to promote increased fossil fuel usage or installations of fossil fuel equipment. The second relates to screening and vegetation around use group four energy infrastructure equipment facilities, in particular, energy storage systems classified as community facilities and located in residence districts. And this is something that we've taken to heart. We've looked at. And I will, in a minute, go through in more detail what we'll be proposing there or recommending there related to improvements. We heard questions about how to actually clarify the zoning regulations around these uses and in particular, how to calculate whether they are use group four, which occurs when there are less than 10,000 square feet in size, and when are they use group six? And that's something that we're happy to clarify in the text. And at the public hearing, we also heard a number of speakers asking us not to make changes to the accessory use definition. We've heard those concerns. We have a recommendation that we'll put forward in one slide. We also heard requests to remove the elements of the proposal that would allow energy storage systems as community facility uses in residence districts on an as-of-right basis. Certainly, this cuts to the core of one of the key elements of the proposal, which is that we need to facilitate greater installations of energy storage system rapidly and across the city, but do so in a way that's careful and deliberate. And we've endeavored to, and create rules that do just that. We've also received requests from community boards to, in a number of elements here, refer applications for these types of facilities to community boards for review. This is a very atypical thing for an as-of-right use to be referred to a community board for review. Certainly, when there's a discretionary action, that is something that occurs. And we also received a recommendation from a few, for example, from the Bronx Borough President, that requested that large lots be given a greater allowance aside from this 10,000-square-foot floor area maximum cap that I'm talking about for energy infrastructure equipment, that they be given a percentage so that they can exceed that 10,000-square-foot cap. But unfortunately, after reviewing this proposal, it's not something that fits within the scope of the proposal. That would be increasing the scope of the proposal. When it comes to solar canopies on building rooftops and parking lots, we received requests to consider lesser heights, lesser percentages, and to retain or institute solar setbacks for some of these solar panels. We likewise heard requests for community board review of these applications so that if someone was installing solar on their building, they would be required to go before the community board. We heard requests for rules regarding glare and aesthetics or to prevent blockage of existing solar panels, which are all absolutely excellent points and are well-suited to other types of regulation, and we are exploring that, but they are not conducive to zoning. And we've also heard requests not to allow, in the case of parking lots which will have solar canopies installed, to allow the interior landscaping requirements where they apply to be waived. And of course, there's an important alignment that needs to occur there, where if you're covering a parking lot in solar canopies, that you not have trees planted beneath them that will wither. Finally, when it comes to onshore wind, we had requests that the application not allow the commission to consider these applications in residence districts should they be received in the future or require minimum lot size, so this would only be allowed on large lots, or to consider the impacts on migratory birds. These are all things that are either well, not well-suited to the zoning authorization that we're proposing or would reduce the commission's ability to consider applications in the future, which the commission, of course, should retain. When it comes to buildings, and again, that's supporting electrification of building systems, supporting the retrofitting of building exteriors and repurposing an existing floor area exemption to promote the next generation of better-than-code buildings. We heard a lot from the practitioner community in particular regarding this set of proposals. The first, regarding the Energy Use Index, which is a technical term for how much energy the building consumes per square foot per year to qualify as an ultra-low-energy building, that is, a building that will receive this incentive. And we received a number of requests to reconsider the regulations here. We worked very closely with our partners at the Department of Buildings and with experts in the field to better understand what their opinion of that would be. in the field to better understand what would work as far as Energy Use Index to support uptake of next-generation buildings, and very pleased with where we've landed. I'll touch on that in a minute. We'll be, we received requests to create a transition period so that as we move to this new ultra-low-energy building incentive, that buildings that are designed on the basis of the existing incentive do not run into problems if they've already been designed and perhaps even already received plan approval. I'll touch on that in a second. We received questions regarding the drafting of the language and improving it. Those are changes that we're always happy to make. And as you may have heard at the public hearing, where this came up a number of times, a request to revise paragraphs K and L of the 1210, Section 1210 definition of floor area, these comments were heard, and we are threading the needle more carefully. I'll touch on that in a second as well. Finally, on this front, we heard a number of requests at the public hearing and in the community board review to scale back or reconsider some of the bulkhead increases or wall thickness increases, community members thinking they're too great, or to reduce or eliminate those changes altogether, or to require setbacks from neighboring buildings, yards, or windows to avoid noise problems, which are, of course, regulated by building code and noise code. So just to dive in a little bit on the changes here regarding the ultra-low-energy buildings and the transition period from the zone green wall deduction to ultra-low-energy buildings, what we are proposing, having worked with Department of Buildings, is to streamline the varying requirements in the proposal, to simply require that buildings have a EUI or Energy Use Index of 15% better than the baseline code requires. We've also clarified language about how to actually do that. So there's a specific table that the engineers have to refer to, ASHRAE 90.1. There were questions about, you know, where precisely and what year, and those have been, those will be addressed in the department's recommended zoning change, zoning text. On the question of a transition period for buildings currently designed, just to emphasize here, typically when a zoning change is adopted, buildings are required to immediately comply with that zoning change. So unless they have achieved substantial completion, their foundations are complete, they must shift gears and abide by those zoning changes. There are buildings that are underway now or have been designed but have not yet achieved plan approval, which upon adoption of this text in the fall, would need to go back and completely redesign the building, or in cases where the building is already partly under construction but has not, will not achieve substantial completion, would have a difficult time moving forward. These buildings are buildings that are doing what we've wanted for the last 10 years, which is to have higher-performing exterior walls, and so we don't want to penalize them. We want to create a well-intentioned transition period so that those buildings can finish what they have been planning to do for years, and the next generation of buildings can better understand what we are asking for, plan for it, design for it, and build towards it. And to that end, we're proposing special vesting rules akin to what the department recommended and the commission adopted in the M1 Hotel Special Permit, which would allow already-designed buildings to obtain plan approval and achieve substantial completion for 12 months following the adoption of the text by the city council. When it comes to updating the language of the qualifying exterior wall thickness, we are updating that language in line with recommendations from the Department of Buildings, who will be administering that text. And when it comes to revising paragraphs K and L of the 1210 definition of floor area, rather than proposing deletion of those paragraphs, which is what the proposal started, entered public review with, taking into account the requests and the feedback as part of the public review process, we'll be proposing clarifying edits instead that very surgically address the question of electrifying building mechanical equipment, which is really the key issue that we were trying to solve as part of this proposal. So where buildings are reapportioning mechanical equipment as part of electrification process, they will not receive violations or objections from DOB, they will be able to move forward. When it comes to transportation, in particular, increasing zoning allowances for EV charging facilities across the city, EV charger sharing in residence districts, flexible use and charging in non-residential parking facilities, automated parking rules outside of the Manhattan Core, and bicycle parking as a specific use throughout the city. I'll be heard requests to not allow proposed flexibility across those first three proposals. So, you know, do not increase flexibility in commercial districts for public EV charging, do not increase EV charger sharing flexibility in residence districts, do not make it easier to co-locate car share, car rental, and commercial vans in non-residential garages. Of course, these recommendations are contrary to the intent of the proposal, which is essentially to increase opportunities for charging across the city for these types of fleets. We received requests that public EV charging facilities should not be allowed in all commercial districts because they are auto-dependent uses, and as a city, we should be reducing our dependence on automobiles, which is something the department takes to heart, but also recognizes that there are already 2 million private vehicles in the city which need to transition over the next several decades to electric vehicles, as well as transition to non-automotive forms of transportation as well. We received similar concerns about bicycle parking facilities in commercial districts, but we recognize as a department that bicycle parking needs to be spoken to in the zoning text and allowed for throughout all the areas where we allow other types of commercial activity as well. And finally, when it comes to waste in water, stormwater, and solid waste, these are changes to allow for permeable paving, updating street tree regulations, adding provisions specific to recycling and composting, and eliminating a certification process for rooftop greenhouses. We received requests to articulate precisely how permeable paving intersects with some existing zoning requirements in special purpose districts, which requires impermeable space. Is permeable paving, does permeable paving count towards your impermeability requirement, or does it not? So we will be clearly stating that where zoning requires you to have a minimum amount of permeable space on your zoning lot, permeable paving does not count towards that. Permeable paving, of course, does reduce stormwater runoff, but it does not reduce stormwater runoff akin to, say, an open portion of the property where it's planted with grass or vegetation. So that will be clarified in the department's recommended edits. We also received requests that we require permeable paving across the city, or that we require rain gardens across the city, as opposed to what we're doing currently in this proposal, which is to allow them. That goes beyond the scope of what this application can consider, and it also really goes, in some ways, beyond what zoning really should be doing here in terms of requiring these types of paving surfaces or rain gardens in the right of way. We are happy to work with the Mayor's Office and other agencies regarding rulemaking here. When it comes to composting and recycling, there were some concerns about these uses being located in commercial districts, and there were also concerns about qualifying rooftop greenhouses. These are greenhouses which exceed floor area and height and setback regulations, currently require certification, and we are proposing to move them as of right. These qualifying rooftop greenhouses are not allowed atop buildings containing residences. Nonetheless, we received requests that we roll this back or limit its applicability. Recognizing that over the last 10 years, we've had only two applications, this is something that we think would continue to frustrate the growth of rooftop greenhouses across the city. So in summary, there are a number of modifications that we've received requests to consider, and that the department is going to be recommending changes to the proposal in line with the feedback we received. And with that, I'd be happy to take questions from the commission. Thank you.
Great. Commissioner Benjamin, did you want him to slide back one? And while Commissioner Benjamin takes a look at that, I will just thank you.
We can provide this presentation to the commission.
We will get it to you. Let me thank you, Niles, for all of your incredible efforts on behalf of this proposal from start to finish, certainly the envisioning process and the educating members of the public and going to community boards, but also to thoughtfully receive and incorporate feedback in this proposal, which I think is a really important part of this process. So I want to recognize that is a complicated thing to do, to take it, digest it, and act on it, and it's a big deal, and we appreciate your doing that. So thank you for everything that you've done to make this possible from start to finish. So let me go to Commissioner Benjamin.
I would just really like to thank you personally for being really open to meeting with myself and other commissioners, particularly Commissioner Osorio on these proposals, to getting us increased information, to responding to our concerns, and to being open to incorporating in future departmental projects some of the things that we discussed. As I said, we used to call some of those kinds of things when there was a commitment FUKAs, this is not a committed FUKA, but I would like to mention that the department is going to be looking at as part of their review of housing quality, some of the areas that would provide additional incentives in larger, already-built buildings to electrify and to become more or less using of carbon and fossil fuels. And I want to thank you for that openness to being able to look at that, and to being able to look at otherwise, that we may be able to, within zoning, incentivize some areas for storage beyond what we already are trying to do. We're, my analysis, and I think we, is that we're allowing it, but we're not providing particular incentives for people to use alternate fuel, or to find a way to be off the electrical grid. So to the extent that in future actions, we can look at something that might incent that, even if it involves potentially additional floor area as a reward for renewable energy generation. And I think it's really important that we look at those things, that you're open to it, and that we try and make this proposal, and future proposals, as robust as we can. As I, we discussed on the phone, no zoning proposal ever stops when it's approved. We just keep doing iterations of it as the years progress, and we have more experience, and I expect that will happen here, and I want to just thank you.
I expect that as well, but thank you very much for those conversations.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Osorio.
Thank you very much, Chair. I also just wanted to echo what Commissioner Benjamin said. I am really appreciative and so impressed with the amount of work that you've done and how carefully you've really listened and documented the vast variety of feedback that you've gotten. This presentation, I think, does a really, really fair and comprehensive job at helping us understand where we are. I think that in sort of connecting with what you've presented to us and in light of the conversations, I'm also very thankful for helping us understand how this connects to larger questions that, as you said, go beyond the scope of the zoning tax amendment, yet are critical for us to making, for us to really accomplish what this is about. And so in terms of the larger projections, thank you so much for helping us consolidate all the different reports and understanding how the city has projected, whether or not the grid is prepared. I think that that's, it was very interesting to understand what is the research that substantiates the position that the city is taking. I think that since then, we've also identified a couple other projections that may have differences of opinion on that, but it's a debate. So I really appreciate the opportunity to engage in that conversation. One recommendation that I wanted to make in that regard is whether we can seek some advice, or at least try to understand from the state, where is the matrix, the energy matrix, really at, and whether or not we're on track with meeting those CLCPA goals. Many people are concerned that we may not be making enough progress in the short term, and we may, and those may be delayed. The reason why I say that is because, on the other hand, I'm very excited with some of the tools that you're incorporating in terms of really incentivizing the use of renewable, from changes in the text that you highlighted, to actually incorporating them meaningfully in the incentives. So to the extent that we can continue conversations, as Commissioner Benjamin mentioned, in terms of expanding what you are proposing for the smaller buildings in the ultra-low-energy conversation to the larger buildings where we can actually sort of maximize the impact, I think that we can accomplish a lot. And then the other question is, which is something that I've been highlighting since the beginning, and you know my position on this, is that I'm still concerned that with the decisions that we will have to make in terms of whether the storage units be accessory in some places or principal uses in others, whether, for example, eliminating them from residential districts may have unintended consequences. For example, one question that I wanted to share, just so that we start thinking about that, maybe you've already figured this out, is whether that will eliminate microgrids in residential districts. Because if we can't have these large storage units, then what is, what is the potential there? Where is the opportunity? What is the cost that we're missing? And then on the twin tracks, even though I feel, I recognize that the department is highlighting the environmental justice benefits of storage to begin with, because it will reduce the reliance on peaker plants. In this larger context, where we may not have enough clean energy ready to go when we increase the demand, I'm concerned about creating what the environmental justice literature refers to as sacrifice zones in industrial districts, where will be, that will be the only places where these large storage units would be required. They would be an air quality improvement for the entire city, but that will come at a cost in terms of potential green jobs that we will not be able to host there. And so I think that this is not new, just something I wanted to share, again echoing what Commissioner Benjamin said, because I'm really grateful for the opportunity to explore some of these questions with you and see what's feasible, what's not, and perhaps, most importantly, how can we connect this zoning tax amendment with the other tax amendments, particularly as we can build on the definitions, like the low-energy, ultra-low-energy buildings with the type of incentives that are coming. So thank you so much for the opportunity to engage with you on all of this and for your great work.
Thank you very much, Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay. Thank you, Niles, again, and we will look forward to picking this one up for a vote before long. Ryan, what else do we have on our agenda?
For our agenda today.
Okay. With that, my appreciation to all of you for your time and energy today. We will see you on Wednesday at 10 o'clock for our public hearings, and with that, we are adjourned. Thank you.